Well, good morning, everyone. I will now call to-
Chair, your microphone.
Whoops, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. And good morning, everyone. I will now call to order the June 26th, 2025 Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll for us?
Yes, thank you, Chair. First, our staff support today, Clerk to the Board Andrew Jirocky, Assistant County Counsel Jeff Muns, roll call Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Commissioner Helm.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Chair Roberts.
Here. Thank you. And will you now join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the- of the courage which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now I will open the meeting for public communication. And just to remind everyone, testimony is limited to three minutes. I'll ask that the comments be respectful and courteous. As a reminder, you can also email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as a part of the public record. If you wish to comment specifically on one of the items that we will receive public hearing on today's agenda, I ask that you please wait until I convene that public hearing on that item to comment on. So I will now open the meeting with public testimony on any non-budget item, so I will take in-person testimony first. And our famous clerk, would you please moderate the in-person and virtual testimony for us?
Thank you, Chair. I have received no blue cards from those who wish to speak in person. If you are attending this meeting in person today and wish to comment during the general public communication period, this is your final opportunity to please fill out a blue card and deposit in the box by the door. Chair, seeing no one in person who wishes to comment with your assent, I'll now move to those attending virtually. If you are attending this meeting virtually and would like to comment during general public communication today, this is your opportunity to please raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. RJ Cook, I'll unmute you. You'll have three minutes. Please introduce yourself.
Rick Cook, pardon me, out from Stafford area. Good morning, Commissioners and Administrator Schmidt and staff. Comments are inspired by listening to Commissioner Savis' comments about Clackamas County volunteers during Commissioner Communications, Policy Sessions, C4 Meetings, and general discussions over the past few months. Thank you, Commissioner Savis, for remembering your roots and how you got your start in serving Clackamas County. With that stated, the Hamlets and community planning organizations of Clackamas County will be stopping by once a month to acknowledge and bring to your attention the volunteers and their great work they do for helping Clackamas County from the Three Hamlets and numerous active CPOs. So here are volunteer recognitions for June from your CPOs and Hamlets. From Beaver Creek, CPO and Hamlet, somebody you all know very well is Kenny Sernak for his services Chair of the Clackamas County 2025 Budget Committee, and also acknowledges years of CPO and Hamlet representative at the C4 level, also his longtime Beaver Creek, Hamlet, and CPO Board of Directors member. Also from Beaver Creek is Gina McMurray for her extensive time, research, and creative commitment to the improvement of the Hamlet's website that informs area and county residents about the great work of the Beaver Creek CPO and Hamlet. From the Stafford Twalton Valley Community Planning Organization, Ed Wagner, who was one of the leaders in the area's wide community involvement, working with Clackamas County ZDO ordinance involving area property owners' rights initiated by the PGE Distribution and Transmission Line Project, hundreds of hours and dollars spent representing area residents concerned. From the Stafford Hamlet, would like to acknowledge Kathy Myers, who was our wonderful, now-retired Stafford Hamlet Board Treasurer for her years' service, working to clarify and streamline Hamlet financial reporting processes to the county. And to finish, I also like to acknowledge two longtime volunteers that you all know, I'm sure, and that would be Karen Bajork, Jennings Lodge resident and current Chair of the Committee for Citizen Involvement, who spends tons of hours a month working with that committee and preparing for meetings. And also Brent Paris, who is Eagle Creek CPO Chair and current Vice Chair of the CCI, working hard for the betterment of citizens of Eagle Creek and Clackamas County. So looking forward to stopping by once a month at your last business meeting and for a quick acknowledgement of the wonderful Clackamas County volunteers that helped make Clackamas a great place to live. Thank you for your time and all your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. This is a final call. If you are attending this meeting virtually and wish to comment, please raise your hand. Mr. Chair, I see no other members of the public, either in person or virtually, who wish to speak today.
All right, thank you. I will now close the general public communication portion, and before I move on, I always want to give my colleagues any chance to make a comment, any of their responses?
I'll just say briefly, Rick, thanks for your comments, and the Board of Commissioners had their retreat the last couple of days, and we have more information to come when we got all that outlined and approved, but I think outreach and public engagement will be a big factor, and hoping that we can be more present. And just thinking from a post-COVID standpoint, I think there's a thirst, if you will, for more in-person meetings, and if we could get back out in the community and come to the communities for, whether it's the full commission or individually, I know that that's really a great value. I get a lot of pleasure out of it, meeting all the volunteers and also all the people in the community. And I know Commissioner Helm, she's got her light on, I know that she's going to be very active as well, and maybe we can cross paths or work together on that as well. But I'm hoping that the CPOs themselves, Hamlets and so forth, can get back to a routine of meeting monthly and have the engagement. I know it's been, for some CPOs, it's been based on attendance or interest and hasn't really been as robust as it was pre-COVID. But that's what I have, Chair.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Helm?
Thank you, Chair Roberts. I just want to say, Rick, I'm looking forward to meeting you tomorrow. I know we've been communicating via email, and I am going to be reaching out to all of the CPOs in the area and Hamlets, and appreciate your good work that you do to represent your communities. I'm looking forward to meeting up with everyone very soon.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Schrader?
Well, Rick, it's always great to hear from you. You text and email me frequently. I always enjoy hearing from you, and I was, I'm always glad, since I've been here a while, I was on the ground floor of doing the Hamlets and Villages back in the day, so I'm glad it's worked so well for so many years, and I hope that you guys continue to kind of keep us accountable, pretty much, but take care, my friend.
All right. Thank you. And I will move on to Gary. What is next on the agenda?
Thank you, Chair. First up is a board discussion item, Item 1, Approval of a Board Order to Designate the Office of County Counsel as Responsible for Representing the State's Interests in Civil Commitment Proceedings. There's no fiscal impact, there are no county general funds involved. Joseph Lucas is Assistant Legal Counsel in the Office of County Counsel. He will give a brief presentation, and then it's a discussion with you Commissioners on what you'd like to do next. So Joseph, please come forward.
Good morning.
This proposed board order will designate the Office of County Counsel as Responsible for Representing the State's Interests in Civil Commitment Proceedings. Currently, the District Attorney's Office represents the State's interests. This board order would shift the primary responsibility from the District Attorney's Office to the Office of County Counsel. And this board order will also designate the District Attorney's Office as the alternative representative when a substitute representative is needed. In a civil commitment hearing, the circuit court determines whether or not an individual is a person with mental illness, and that term has a specific definition under the Oregon Revised Statutes. Under Oregon Revised Statute 426.005.1F, it means, among other criteria, that because of a mental disorder, the person is dangerous to sell for others or unable to provide for basic personal needs. If the court does decide that the individual is a person with mental illness, as defined by the statute, then the court determines whether to order that the person be committed to the Oregon Health Authority, or be released, or be placed on a conditional release. The civil commitment hearings may be held at the Clackamas County Courthouse; however, typically the hearings are held at the healthcare facility where the person alleged to have a mental illness is receiving treatment. I do note that in the staff report I wrote, "Under this proposed board order, the State's interests will be primarily represented by a specific dedicated Assistant Legal Counsel from the County Counsel's Office." I didn't state that very well, and I do want to clarify, that the proposed board order does not mention that the State's interests will be primarily represented by a specific dedicated Assistant Legal Counsel from the County Counsel's Office, but that is how it will be handled by the County Counsel's Office, at least for now. This will provide increased subject matter expertise and consistency in representation. Moreover, it will provide further clarity, especially for the person alleged to have a mental illness, that it is a civil process rather than a criminal process. And so I respectfully submit to you this proposed board order. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, Commissioner West?
I know traditionally this has gone through the DA's office. Why is this change happening?
I think one of the reasons is, like I mentioned, is that it will provide more subject matter expertise and consistency in the representation. And so right now, I believe it's mostly certified law clerks that are handling these, and so this would be a shift to an attorney.
Are we seeing the other counties make this shift for this population? I know there's a lot of changes happening, not just at the legislature right now, and we're all kind of stepping up to try to figure out how to deal with this specific need with aid and assist, and are we seeing other counties make this shift? Is this by statute, just shifted to the County Counsel, or is this a best practice we're implementing?
Yeah, I would think it'd be a best practice. I don't know if other counties are shifting to this. There are, I know at least one other county that does it this way, and that'd be Washington County, and they have their County Counsel's Office do civil commitments.
Okay, and this effort's supported by DA Wentworth?
It is.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, just to add a little bit of context to this, and how this came about, when Counsel Veto and I had, I brought this up to Counsel Veto with regards to how, what I could do to learn more about some of the challenges with civil commitment, and she had that experience in Washington State to quite a degree. And as I recall, I can't remember the exact number, but there were several counties in the state that actually do this directly. And I think it was my interpretation from her that this, as Counsel stated here this morning, this would be an improvement and deliver that specialized service as opposed to alternating people that may not really have that expertise. So, and I think we can learn from it as well, and I'm hoping, you know, as I explore this a little bit deeper than just this action here today, that what we can learn from this might help our advocacy at the state level for any adjustments in statute or whatnot to help things along, because I know that it's difficult, you know, the definition of how, or the threshold of when someone is either committed or not is different by state. And so I feel that my experience, and maybe Commissioner West's yours as well, and I know Sheriff Roberts as well, being his, well, former Sheriff Roberts, that there are some people that are on the street that should be on the street, and it's not in their best interest. It's clearly they are putting themselves in danger, and sometimes I find it almost inhumane that some of these people are on the street because of a legal definition, and as opposed to the, really, the human need aspect of it. So that's what I'm hoping to see out of this.
Yeah, and I might just comment. First of all, I think it's very important work, I guess, to make that perfectly clear. I think that my only concern at this particular point is the workload and impact, and how that can impact County Counsel staff. So, for example, my understanding, and I think you pointed that out, that currently the DA is having law clerks, people that are in law school, right, trying to finish their law degree, right, and we will be having attorneys, so that's a pretty significant difference. And then, it's not that I'm opposed to it, and this is just, I guess I'd ask my colleagues to think about this, is perhaps just not putting in perhaps a pause on this until the new County Counsel can basically assess the current workload, see what it is, and see if that's a direction that they would recommend as whoever that person might be. So I'm not saying that we don't do it, I would just say whoever might be coming in might make an assessment, and seeing what the totality of the entire workload is, is it doable? And Commissioner Savis has a comment.
Yeah, I actually asked that question of Counsel Veto, and she felt that it would not be that, as that much of a burden, that it wouldn't be as frequent as one might think, and that we had the capacity to do it. And I believe in the, it's in the best interest of the citizens of Clackamas County and the family members who are trying to help their family members in these tough times, get them in a safer place, in a better place. So I see, really frankly, the need is more urgent than pausing, and so I just would ask that we give it a try and see how it works, and if it's not working, or it's too much of a load, but I kind of had the assurances from Counsel Veto, entrusted her advice, that this is something that could easily be handled in Legal Counsel's Office, from a capacity standpoint.
And maybe that's a great question, is what would you see the workload of it? As the volume?
The, I'll get my document here. It was, okay, there were 61 hearings in 2024, 57, I think it was, in 2023, 56 in 2022, and 60 in 2021, and so that would be, let's see, an average of 58 and a half, I think it would be a year, so about almost five hearings a month.
Yeah, so I see Commissioner, go ahead.
I think we both, our lights are at the same time, I don't know who's first.
Can I go with her, is that all right?
Please.
Okay, Commissioner Helm?
But it was my understanding during the budget process that the DA's office is understaffed, and that the Council, County Counsel Office is fully staffed, so I think there's a staffing issue there, too, and the experience, I think, is needed in the County Counsel's Office for something like this, so I don't know that the DA's office has the ability to handle this any better than the County Counsel Office.
And I should mention, I don't know if it's 100% always certified law clerks, maybe sometimes there's an attorney doing it, but.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner West?
I, you will, I will move on to my second part of my comment, because that's exactly what I was going to say. With my understanding, what DA Wentworth is, and we know this through his budget, that he does a lot with a little, and so this will probably bring some relief to his operations. I mean, do we know if they do this way in Marion County?
That I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I just, this is an issue, this is a topic where Ms. Veto was incredibly accomplished and had a lot of background in, especially with local government, so I trust, like, her recommendation with this, and I do agree that DA Wentworth's office could probably use a little relief, if anyone could use it, so I'll, if the, I'll be supporting this moving forward, and thanks for your presentation.
All right, any other comments? So is there a motion?
Chair, I move we approve the board order designating County Counsel as Responsible for Representing the State's Interests in Civil Commitment Proceedings.
Second.
There's a second, okay. Almost a tie there on the second. I'll give it to Commissioner Helm. So Commissioner Savis has moved to approve the board order designating County Counsel as Responsible for Representing the State's Interests in Civil Commitment Proceedings, and Commissioner Helm has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Right, hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the poll for us?
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Helm?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Gary, what is next?
Thank you. Next, you have three public hearings. The first public hearing is second public hearing for the removal of County Code Section 2.05.160.4 regarding extended sick leave, and Section 2.05.070.17 regarding veterans' preference for replacement with employee policies and procedures. There's no fiscal impact, there are no county general funds involved. Presenting is Heather Pedersen, who's Deputy Director of the Human Resources Department. Go ahead, please, Heather.
Good morning, Chair Roberts and Commissioners. As Gary mentioned, this is the second public hearing related to the removal of County Code Section 2.05.160.4 regarding extended sick leave, and Section 2.05.070.17 regarding veterans' preference for replacement with county policies. The first public hearing was on June 12th, and this plan was approved in policy session by the Board of County Commissioners on May 6th. And this is the first action in a multi-phased approach to remove outdated or redundant language from County Code and replace it, or as it's replaced, with updated county policies. Specifically, the immediate updates that we're requesting, again, the removal of the extended sick leave language from County Code, we have, that language is now updated. The related policy, which was EPP 11, was archived in 2024, and really, that's been replaced with updated and new policies related to protected leave and paid family leave, the Oregon family leave law. And then the second update is removing veterans' preference language. It's really just one sentence that's in County Code, and the policy related to veterans' preference was updated last year, and it's a very robust policy, so having one sentence in County Code is not really doing us any good to have that language in there when we have a robust policy. So that, that's my presentation. Do you have any questions?
All right, any questions?
House cleaning, correct?
House cleaning, that's right.
All right, seeing no questions, I'll now open the second public hearing required for this item, and so Clerk, would you please moderate in-person and virtual testimony for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have received no blue cards from those attending the meeting in person. If you are attending this meeting in person, wish to comment on this specific item, this is your final opportunity to please fill out a blue card and deposit in the box by the central doors. Mr. Chair, seeing no one who wishes to comment in person, with your assent, I'll now move to those attending virtually. If you are attending this meeting virtually and would like to comment on this specific matter, I ask you to please raise your hand. Mr. Chair, seeing that is all staff online, seeing no members of the public who are attending virtually, I see no other members of the public today, either in person or virtually, wish to comment on this specific matter.
All right, thank you, Andrew. I will now close the public hearing on this item, and looking to my colleagues, do you have any further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
I move we approve the removal of Section 2.05.160.4 regarding extended sick leave, and Section 2.05.070.17 regarding veterans' preference from County Code.
Second.
All right, Commissioner West has moved to approve the removal of Section 2.05.160.4 regarding the extended sick leave, and Section 2.05.070.17 regarding veterans' preference from County Code, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Helm?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, thank you, Heather. The next public hearing is first public hearing for amendments to County Code, Chapter 2.07, Compliance Hearings Officer, and Chapter 5.01, Animal Licensing Services and Enforcement, as well as declaring an emergency. There are no county general funds with these changes. Jeff Muns, Assistant Legal Counsel for the Office of County Counsel, will present. Go ahead, please, Jeff.
Thank you, Gary. Morning, Chair, Commissioners. Another housekeeping measure here before you for the first public hearing. These changes to the Compliance Hearings Officer portion of the code in 207 are simply to allow for citations to be issued in cases of building code violations. And we had the policy session earlier in June, we talked about how this is tied to then the changes that were already adopted last week regarding the fines and fees. We had an exception in our code currently to not issue citations, because there was, I think there was some confusion about how much can be cited and imposed as penalties in cases of building code violations, but this change brings us consistent with ORS 455-895-2, which deals with just that, the maximum that we can charge in these cases of building code violations. Previously, it was much lower, now we're bringing it up consistent with our other violation amounts and handling all those claims the same, matters the same in code enforcement. So housekeeping change on that one. The other section here is changes to the Dog Services Code under Chapter 501 of the code. The first is to allow for the waiver of the licensing fee for individuals with mental impairment, not just a physical one. This brings us compliant with the ADA and be consistent across our application of these waivers with people that come in seeking a waiver for those conditions. The second change is to simply send out the citations by first-class mail. Previously, they were sent out certified, and a lot of those get returned, and so make sure that people get these citations to let them know they need to renew, and they have the citation pending instead of having this additional step, and, I guess, not as likely to receive notices. This also brings it consistent with other measures in our code, the code enforcement others, where notices and citations are sent out by first-class mail. And finally, we have this in here as declaring an emergency, simply so that it becomes effective much earlier, consistent with the fines and fees already adopted by the board, to be effective July 1st, so that the second public hearing would be July 17th, so we'd have a gap in there, but if approved on the 17th, they'd be effective as of that date, instead of waiting another 90 days.
Great. Any questions? Go ahead, Ben.
Is this a type of mail where they just-
Excuse me.
Where they have to sign for it, so we know whether or not they received it, or what's the benefit of it?
Yeah, first-class mail, you just get your mail. And so certified mail, this happens a lot in other cases, I used to do it a lot for like insurance claims. You have to send a certified letter as well. We do it for notices in alternate services for service of process in the courts. Oftentimes, people don't want to sign for a certified letter. It sees Clackamas County on there, Attorney's Office, or whatever the case may be, and like, yeah, I don't really want that one, so then they don't get notice, you know, we're trying to give them notice, make sure they have an opportunity to challenge it or to address it, but if it's certified, oftentimes they don't. So by doing it first-class mail, which is what we do in cases of evictions and a lot of other processes where people need to know for sure, it's first-class mail, because they'll always get that. You can additionally send it another way if you want to track it, but first-class mail gets through to people, and they receive it, and that's why we've shifted to this consistent with our court rules, yeah.
Okay. Thanks. That's it.
And it's a savings.
Okay. We like a savings. Yes. Great question. Any other questions? All right, I'll now open the first required public hearing on this item, so Clerk, would you please moderate the in-person and virtual testimony again?
This is a final call. If you are attending this meeting in person, wish to comment on this specific matter, to please fill out a blue card and deposit in the box by the door. Mr. Chair, seeing no members of the public physically present, wish to comment, and seeing no members of the public virtually attending, I see no other members of the public who wish to comment on this specific matter today.
All right, I will now close the public hearing on this item, and is there any further discussion, my colleagues? Seeing none, may I have a motion to read the ordinance by the title only, please?
Chair, I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
And Commissioner Helm has moved to read the ordinance by title only. Commissioner Schrader has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Helm?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. And Clerk, would you please assign a number and read the ordinance by title only for us?
Certainly. The ordinance will be numbered 01-2025. In ordinance amending Clackamas County Code- In ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 2.07, Compliance Hearings Officer, and Clackamas County Code, Chapter 5.01, Animal Licensing Services and Enforcement, and Declaring an Emergency.
All right, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any proposed changes to the draft ordinance at this time? Seeing none. The second required public hearing for this item will be on Thursday, July 17th, during our regular business meeting. So at this time, I'll now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Enhanced Law Enforcement District Board of Directors. Gary?
Thank you, Chair. You are now meeting as the Enhanced Law Enforcement District of Clackamas County Board of Directors. This is a public hearing. You have several items today about supplemental budgets, commissioners. The rule, as you know, if it's an over 10% change, you have a public hearing. If it's an under 10% change, it's simply a consent agenda approval. So you have several of these today, so that makes sure we finish our fiscal year that ends in four days within the appropriated budget authority. So we're simply following Oregon budget law to do these supplemental budgets. So now, you're again meeting as the Enhanced Law Enforcement District. This is a public hearing, approval of a supplemental budget resolution for fiscal year 2024, 2025, for the Enhanced Law Enforcement District. Fiscal impact is a net increase in appropriations of $1,335,439. Funding includes other revenue sources, beginning fund balance, prior year revenue, and $1.2 million of county general funds. Elizabeth Comfort, Finance Director, will present. Go ahead, please, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Elizabeth Comfort, Finance Director for the county. Oregon budget law in ORS 294 requires a supplemental resolution before a fund or department exceeds its budgeted spending limits. And so before you today, we have a supplemental budget with one item totaling an increase of 1.3 million. Just a quick overview of these changes for the Enhanced Law Enforcement District is projected to exceed its current budget by the fiscal year end, and we're requesting 1.2 million in a transfer of general fund support, an approval of a budget, and to additional $95,000 in interest earnings, and also an estimated increase in federal state funding of $77,000. And they've estimated property tax to be reduced by $38,000 based on projections. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Right, any questions? All right, I will now open the first required public hearing on this item. So clerk, would you please moderate the in-person and virtual testimony for us?
If you are attending this meeting in person, this is a final call for you to deposit a blue card in the box by the doors. Mr. Chair, seeing no members of the public physically present who wish to speak, and no members of the public attending virtually, I see no one else of the public wishes to comment on this specific matter today.
All right. Sorry, I'm playing catch-up here one moment. So may I have a motion now?
Chair, I was actually hoping for the other discussion, further discussion.
Okay. I'm sorry.
So if I may, yeah, thank you. I know I said this along the way in the last month or so, and I'm not attempting to beat a dead horse. I don't expect any changes. I'm going to prove this. But I'm just asking a procedural question to get to my point, and that is that, as I mentioned, just to bring everyone to speed, you know, I recognize for years, we have been using sheriff Fund 100 to augment the finances for ELED. And all I was hoping to do was to clarify that and to make a, recognize that in a way that those funds came from Fund 100 from the sheriff's general fund, not the county general fund. What happened here is that it's coming from general fund. So my question is, knowing that we're, you know, with all the board budget committee actions that took place, there are going to be some changes. Is this something that we need to do individually? And should I request to have that done in near term? Some of a timing standpoint, when will we make the change? And the change being that these funds will be, number one, either coming from Fund 100 and/or going to the voters and saying, asking the voters for either more money to make the ELED whole as a district so that we can meet the terms of the, what the measure said back when the district was formed? Or if a no vote would potentially result in saying, if not, then we will reduce the amount of deputies or service level of ELED at no cost. If the vote's no, so it's a vote no would be reduce the promise, and there would be no burden to the sheriff's general fund, Fund 100. And a vote yes would increase funding from the public to keep that level of service in ELED. That was my, that's my intention. How would you suggest, Gary, as administrator, that we would either program that in months to come?
Thank you, Commissioner. I feel that the various motions the Budget Committee made addresses being crystal clear on the funds needed to operate the Enhanced Law Enforcement District and the Sheriff's Office. And I think that analysis, when it comes back to you before the end of this calendar year, will give you guidance then on the next steps you want to take. So you did not make a motion to go to the voters, and I don't think you're asking for that yet. But I would ask you if you could allow staff to complete the motions you did make at the Budget Committee, and we'll report back to you in November and December. At that point, you'll have a clear analysis of what steps you'd like to take next as far as how to support the ELED. So I would request if we could wait for us to take action on the motions you made.
Okay. And Gary, just to add to that, and this is probably the only opportunity today, well, maybe not, but I'll just say it now, just to get it out of the way. And that is that when we look at ELED, I'm hoping that we do a similar look to the levy. My concern, and I think the math proves to me, that what was promised in the levy may not have ever been accomplishable because it wasn't adequate, a number of money, to actually fill all those positions in the first place. So it was a over-promise, under-deliver kind of a measure ultimately. So I don't know if the bookkeeping changes and the analysis of what the cost actually to do the levy, you know, what is the cost to actually meet everything that was promised in the levy? And either bring that up to speed or reduce the ask, knowing that the levy needs to be updated. But I think it was miscalculated on the front end, and that's why the levy cannot fill those positions. That's my opinion from looking at the numbers.
Thank you. And I feel our staff will do that analysis as well as part of the work you've asked us to do.
All right. Any other comments? Motion?
I move for adoption of the Enhanced Law Enforcement District fiscal year 2024, 2025 supplemental budget with a net appropriations increase of $1,335,439.
Second.
All right. Director Savis has moved to the adoption of the Enhanced Law Enforcement District fiscal year 2024, 2025 supplemental budget with a net appropriation increase of $1.335,439. And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, would you please call the poll?
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Helm.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Andrew. I will now adjourn as the Enhanced Law Enforcement District Board of Directors and convene as the Service District Number Five, Street Lighting Board of Directors. So Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. You are now meeting as the Service District Number Five, Street Lighting District of Clackamas County. This is consent agenda. Again, as I mentioned, this is a supplemental budget, but because it's under 10%, it does not require a public hearing. So I'll just read it, sorry. Item A, approval of a supplemental budget resolution for fiscal year 2024, 2025 for Service District Number Five, Street Lighting. Fiscal impact is a zero net increase in appropriations. No county general funds are involved. So I'm sorry, Elizabeth, are you still here? Why are we doing a supplemental budget if there's no fiscal impact?
To change the appropriations.
There's a, oh, the fiscal impact is zero, but there is still a net increase in appropriations. I'm sorry, I read the, I was missing a comma, maybe. All right, sorry, thank you. That is the single consent agenda item for your consideration, Commissioner. I have to let Andrew handle this. I'm sorry, I blew it. Back to you, Commissioners.
Well, thanks. Gary, we're, both of us a little off today. We're getting it. So do any of my colleagues wish to remove any item from the consent agenda then? All right, may I have a motion on this consent agenda, please?
I move we approve the Service District Number Five, Street Lighting Consent Agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Director Helm has moved to approve the Service District Number Five, Street Lighting Consent Agenda, and Director Savis has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, would you please call the poll for us?
Director Savis.
Yes, aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Helm.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I will now adjourn as the Service District Number Five, Street Lighting Board of Directors and convene as a Library District Board of Directors. Gary?
Thank you, Chair. You are now meeting as the Library Service District of Clackamas County Board of Directors. This is consent agenda. I'm going to redeem myself. I'll read this one. Item one, approval of a supplemental budget resolution for fiscal year 2024, 2025 for the Library Service District. Fiscal impact is a net increase in appropriations of $1,250,000. Funding is through beginning fund balance and property taxes. No county general funds are involved. Mr. Chair, that completes the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Colleagues wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
I move we approve the Library Service District Consent Agenda.
Second.
All right. Director Schrader has moved to approve the Library Service District Consent Agenda. It's been seconded by Director Helm. Any further discussion? Clerk, would you please call the poll?
Director West.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Helm.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I will adjourn as the Library Service District Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Gary?
Thank you, Chair. You are now meeting as the Board of County Commissioners. This is the consent agenda for the Board of County Commissioners. Andrew is going to read this one, but before he does, we emailed you earlier this morning, and I want to say publicly, item B2, this is finance, item two, the supplemental budget for Clackamas County. There was a minor change in this number for the Office of County Council. It is correct online. The agenda that you're seeing on the screen is correct, but it was a change from 24 hours ago. It was a $50,000 increase change, minor, but it's allowed, we did everything right, and we want to catch it before you did the final approval today. But because there's no discussion, I just wanted to call that out for your attention as you go through that item. So with that, Andrew, would you please read the entire consent agenda?
Consent agenda for the Board of County Commissioners. A, elected officials. Item one, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Two, approval of an amendment to a grant agreement with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for the Oregon Behavioral Health Deflection Program. Amendment value has no fiscal impact for an extension of three months. Total grant value is $1,060,853 for 16 months. Funding is through Oregon House Bill 4002. No county general funds are involved. B, finance. One, approval of a public improvement contract with central builders for a sand shed and retaining wall at the county's Markham Stockpile site. Contract value is $278,566.45 for six months. Funding is through state shared revenues, including liquor and cigarette tax revenues. Two, approval of a supplemental budget resolution for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Fiscal impact is a net increase in appropriations of $13,675,790. Funding is through charges for services, federal, state, and local funding, inter-fund transfers, other revenue resources, and $5,350,000 of county general funds. Three, approval of an amendment with Berry, Dunn, McNeil, and Parker for grant sub-recipient monitoring and sub-recipient agreement support services. Amendment value is $120,000 for one year. Total contract value is $545,000 for two years. Funding is through American Rescue Plan Act funds and departmental cost allocations, which does include a small portion of county general funds. C, disaster management. One, approval of an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon State Police for use of the medical examiner's facilities. Amendment value is $93,346.56 for two years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. D, juvenile. One, approval of personal services contract with Ant Farm for young adult work crew supervision services. Contract value is $406,863 for five years. Funding is through the Oregon Youth Authority. No county general funds are involved. Two, approval of a personal services contract with Safety Compass for support services to commercially sexually exploited children. Contract value is $272,523 for five years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. E, transportation development. One, approval of a resolution supporting the Sunrise Corridor Community Vision Plan and the Sunrise Gateway Refinement Plan. If funded, total plan value is $15,500,000. Funding source may be metro regional flexible funds. Two, approval of a board order vacating a portion of Talons Road to Eagle Creek Rock Products. Order value is $2,547.53. Funding is through Eagle Creek Rock Products. No county general funds are involved. Three, approval of a personal services contract with Claire Company for building code plan review and inspection services as needed. Contract value is $400,000 for four years. Funding is through permitting revenues. No county general funds are involved. Four, approval of a board order for purchases under a cooperative purchasing agreement with Pacific WRO for furniture at the new Oak Lodge Library. Order value is $315,723. Remaining project funding is from program operating funds and budgeted county general funds. F, health housing and human services. One, approval of an amendment to a personal services contract with Mercy Housing Northwest for property management and resident case management at Mercy Green Bay Apartments. Amendment value is $580,000 for one year. Total agreement value is $1,160,000 for two years. Funding is through supportive housing services measure funds. No county general funds are involved. Two, approval of a local sub-recipient agreement with St. John's Episcopal Church for building modifications to serve as an emergency overnight warming shelter location. Amendment value is $47,228 for one year. Funding is through supportive housing services measure funds. No county general funds are involved. Three, approval of a sub-recipient grant agreement with Torres Juntos to provide youth substance use prevention programming. Agreement value is $220,000 for one year. Funding is through county opioid settlement funds. No county general funds are involved. Four, approval of a sub-recipient grant agreement with Northwest Family Services to provide youth substance use prevention programming. Agreement value is $220,000 for one year. Funding is through county opioid settlement funds. No county general funds are involved. Five, approval of a revenue intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for public health services, including disease prevention, emergency preparedness, and community health programs. Agreement value is $5,786,239 for one year. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Six, approval of a revenue sub-agreement with Oregon State University for parenting education. Agreement value is $225,000 for 16 months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Seven, approval of a personal services contract with CHG Companies to provide temporary medical, dental, and psychiatric providers for county health centers. Contract value is $1,000,000 for five years. Funding is through health centers fees for services. No county general funds are involved. Mr. Chair, that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Andrew. Colleagues, you wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? See any? So may I have a motion, please?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. You sound like Commissioner Helm. I'm going to give that one to you there. Again, pretty close tie. So Commissioner Schrader has moved to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Helm has seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Helm.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Mr. Chair.
And thank you, Andrew. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners convene as the North Clackamas Parks and Rec District Board of Directors. Gary?
This is the consent agenda for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Andrew, would you please read the consent agenda?
North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda. Item A: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Water Environment Services for Joint Management of Natural Areas and Water Quality Projects. Agreement value is $463,500 for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Surface Water Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved. Mr. Chair, that concludes the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Colleagues wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
I move we approve the Intergovernmental Agreement with Water Environment Services for Joint Management of Natural Areas and Water Quality Projects for the North Clackamas Parks and Rec District.
And is there a second?
Second.
Right. Director Schrader has moved to approve the North Clackamas Parks and Rec Recreation District Consent Agenda. Director Helm has seconded. Any further discussion? Clerk, would you please call the poll?
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Helm.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I will now adjourn as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors and convene as the Water Environmental Services. And Gary, what is next?
Thank you, Chair. It's been a long fiscal year, hasn't it? So we're all, we're getting there. We're on fumes. We're all doing our best. This is the consent agenda for Water Environment Services. Andrew, would you please read the consent agenda?
Water Environment Services Consent Agenda. Item A: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for Joint Management of Natural Areas and Water Quality Projects. Agreement value is $463,500 for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Surface Water Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved. B. Approval of a Contract with SULITAC for Construction of the Three Creeks Flood Plane Enhancement Project. Contract value is $1,607,901.86 for two years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Surface Water Construction Funds. No county general funds are involved. C. Approval of a Contract with Relay Resources for Janitorial Services at Water Environment Services Water Resource Recovery Facilities. Contract value is $869,170.56 for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved. Mr. Chair, that concludes the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
And thank you. Looking to my directors, do you wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
I move we approve the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Second.
Right. Director Helm has moved to approve the Water Environmental Services Consent Agenda. It's been seconded by Director Schrader. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, would you please call the poll for us?
Director West.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Helm.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I will now adjourn as Water Environmental Services Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. And Gary?
Thank you. The next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I'd like to recognize our incredible county employees and the services we provide for the public. Today, I want to recognize our staff from our disaster management program. Recently, that staff participated in a public open house sponsored by Portland General Electric to provide an opportunity for the community to meet, to discuss topics like public safety power shutoffs, power alert notifications, wildfire and emergency preparedness, and more. At this event, one of our disaster management team members, Operations Coordinator Brenna Cruz, went beyond, above and beyond the call of duty, and a member of the public wrote this in about her. The resident wrote, "I brought my kids to this event, and it was a lot of fun. My youngest is on the autism spectrum, and she was equal, she was equal parts excited and overwhelmed at the event. She broke free from my hand and made a beeline for the door. I ran after her, and I was able to catch her just after she hit the door and right before she made it into the actual parking lot where folks were driving through. The second I snagged her, all the adrenaline hit, and I broke down and ended up having a panic attack right there in front of the Grange Hall. I was so scared. There were a few awesome people that checked on us, and one of them was Brenna. She not only comforted a terrified mama, but she helped pick up all the things I had dropped, offered water, and replaced the dropped ruined things. She just went above and beyond trying to help calm us all down and being so sweet and encouraging. I truly love this community. You are all amazing." So thank you to Brenna and all our staff who do things like that every day just to help the public to be kind, generous people when someone else is in need. Thank you, Brenna. Next, you may have read Commissioners an article in the Oregonian recently about our own Jamie Brunig, who's a community paramedic in our Public Health Division of Health, Housing, and Human Services. Our community paramedics go out to help homeless people in our community, helping with anything that folks may need, such as diabetes control, asthma help, substance abuse disorders, paranoia, depression, any other undiagnosed mental illness. A reader wrote, a reader who read the article in the Oregonian wrote in, "If only we had an army of people like Jamie Brunig." Amen. Thank you, Jamie, for all you do, for our community paramedic team, and our public health staff." So those are my stories of great work of our employees. Some protocol announcements for you, Board. As you know, you are on recess next week, June 30th through July 7th, in part to honor the Independence Day holiday. There will be no board meetings next week and the following week on July 10th because we will do not have a quorum due to most of you attending the National Association of Counties Conference. Therefore, the next board business meeting will be on Thursday, July 17th at 10:00 a.m. So again, no board business meeting for the next two weeks. That is my report. Back to you, Chair.
All right. Thank you, Gary. Great news. And we're going to shift to Commissioner Communication, and I want to turn to my colleague to the right.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Craig. Well, since we just mentioned the National Association of Counties, one of the things I want to let you know, I've been working with Danny Stam and Adam Freer and Tony Merrick, who's my policy advisor. I've been asked by the National Association of Counties to be on a panel talking about what we're doing with affordable housing and how we are trying to integrate childcare into that matrix and metrics. So I've been working with them, getting the information. I lent some materials to Commissioner Helm the other day so she could review some of the information I have for that and keep that involved. Also, I'll be presenting a resolution at the Community Economic Workforce Development Committee, and the resolution I will be presenting is a resolution in support of the Economic Development Commission. The EDC is important for local counties across the nation to get grants dealing specifically with workforce and economic development issues. So I've been privileged every year. This is the one resolution. They always give me a ring first and say, would you like to present this? And I willingly, willingly say yes with that. The other piece, I wanted to let you know that this morning, Tony and I and Nancy, our Deputy Administrator Nancy Bush, we met with the, we met with the Clackamas Community College and Oregon State University Task Force, beginning the discussion about co-locating Oregon State University's Extension Program at the Clackamas Community College Campus. They have monies for a new building. We're working on that. One of the things I found out today, and I need to get a closer look at, they did do a similar program with Talama College, Community College out on the coast, so there is a way to do it. We'll be looking at that model, and we will be working basically to get a, you know, memorandum of understanding into an, or IGA, I think it's really an MOU, pulled together so both educational institutions have some clarity about where the space is, what the programming's going to be, all those small details. So we are in process for doing that. One of the things I mentioned when we, during that meeting was that it's a wonderful opportunity to connect OSU with our local community college, Clackamas, because it can be a feeder for those young people who want to get an associate and get that information, but then also have an opportunity with that co-location on campus, perhaps to do a four-year degree, more than likely in agriculture, biology, and other things that Extension will have to offer. I also spent some time this past week at Portland Community College. Why do I visit? Well, Portland Community College is also part, in Lake Oswego, that's kind of the closest college to campus that feeds that area of our county, and I'm interested in community college because they, community colleges because they are a key element of our workforce system. They are the bulwark for manufacturing, apprenticeship programs, you name it. I had a wonderful lunch with President Adrian Bennings from West Texas. She's been there since 2022. She is extremely dynamic and a great leader for that campus, as is Dr. Tim Cook at Clackamas Community College. We're, we're really lucky to have such fine institutions educating our folks here in Clackamas County. At PCC, I had a tour of the childcare facility and their nursing and radiology tech programs. They offer lots of classes. I'm going to plan, I think I'm going to take Italian in all my spare time as a senior, because it's about, I come up here every day, and I'm close to Clackamas, but in Lake Oswego where I live now, it's about a 15-minute ride to Portland's, you know, community. So I'm going to see if I can do some continuing ed there. The other thing, did I mention the early learning presentation I did at Naco? I did, didn't I? Oh, okay. Well, that is another thing that's happening at Naco. They basically, National Association of Counties tapped into me to talk about our housing development, our low-income housing, affordable housing developments, and how we're integrating childcare into that. So Adam Freer and Danny Stam, I'm going to give them a shout out, have been really, really helpful in getting me that information. So that's really good. I want to mention our North Willamette Valley Experiment Station with Oregon State University. They are a research arm up here, a research anchor for all things agricultural with berries, strawberries, agro-voltaics up here in this area. They are having a number of open houses. Right now, they're having an open house with their Cranberry Open Field Tour. If you get a look at some of their, their offerings, I would suggest if you get a chance to take those kinds of tours, that would be fantastic. Finally, the other piece I've just done is a regional, with the Regional Disaster Prepared Disorganization with Daniel Niebauer, I hope I said his name correctly. He's another wonderful staff person that helps me understand all things for disaster preparedness. We actually took a spirit boat tour along the Columbia River and that whole industrial area because it is where a lot of the gas and oil facilities are located. It's on a very tenuous ground should there be an earthquake, there in a whole area that's going to be potentially liquefied. So we got a whole disaster tour, which was kind of a downer, but, but at least getting us prepared to take a look at how we can mitigate anything should we have anything as large as an earthquake in that area. Pam Trees was there, who is my co-colleague in Washington County, and that was great. And also, thank you, colleagues, for, we had a great retreat last few days. Or actually, it was, it was tiring. It was actually pretty intense and tiring, too. So let's be, let's be honest about that. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Savis.
Thank you. Couple updates. We had our J-PAC meeting this morning, and I always try to give you a report on that. One thing I want to bring to your attention, I think, is important because it has several commissions have been involved in this and speaking out about it, dating all the way back to back when we were a three-commission board, when the Board of County Commissioners, when now President Peterson, but Lynn Peterson was on the county commission, and that was when the CRC was in place. It was the Columbia River Crossing, and they were going to, the project would actually result in diversion going on Interstate 5 traffic onto 205, and our concern was the diversion and issues. And since that time, back in the 2000s, the traffic on 205 has increased substantially. And we believe, right now at current levels, that that will, that will really exacerbate it, the fact that they are going to do pre-construction tolling on I-5 as presented, and the cost of the whole IBR, now it's called the IBR project, Interstate Bridge Replacement, that will increase the tolls, and I think it will probably increase the amount of diversion on the 205. It was our hope that the 205 lanes would be in place, built in place before that happened, and we got a few more days before signing die, so we're not really sure that there will be, and it does not look like there will be a pathway to funding for the lanes anytime soon. So therefore, I'm going to, going to be meeting with the IBR team, a great group of people, and get a briefing, and after that briefing, I'm probably going to ask that the board, would you consider a letter, crafting a letter expressing our concerns about the potential diversion and so forth. So that's one thing that, look for that in the near horizon. It's not a big controversial thing, I don't believe, and I shared that this morning, most of what I said here this morning at the J-PAC table. Second thing I want to bring up that took place at J-PAC this morning was the RFFA, the Regional Flexible Funds Allocation. The Step Two was discussed, and the Step Two being some of the smaller local projects, and we got, it looks like we're going to have in the allocation, three projects, one in Oregon City, one in Milwaukee, and one in Gladstone, where the Trolley Trail Bridge fell down. If you all remember that, that's going to be a footbridge going across to connect downtown Gladstone to Oregon City. So that's a win for us. It was a kind of a, it was kind of a good meeting, a lot, a lot of good stuff, and didn't have a lot of tension as we typically do. And lastly, my policy coordinator, Everett Wild, who I've known since he was a, a young man, who is now my policy coordinator, he's, he's, it's a bittersweet moment, but I just want to just, number one, applaud Everett for his hard work. He's a brilliant young man, got an opportunity to go to work for Wilsonville, and I'm really excited for him. So he'll still be working hard for the betterment of Clackamas County. I know he will. I know where his heart is, and, and I will be finding a replacement to replace him, which will be hard to do, big fills to shoot, big shoes to fill. But I just want to just give a shout out to Everett and all his great work that he's done. He's just a brilliant, brilliant young man and has a passion for public service, and it started, just tell the story a little bit, when he was nine years old is when I met him. I knew his mom and his dad, and he came to a public meeting and spoke at a public meeting when he was 10 years old, and he's been interested in public service ever since then. He's committed his life to that. So congratulations, Everett. We're going to miss you. Chair, back to you.
And thank you, Paul. Commissioner West.
Thank you, Chair. We, I think, had a very productive retreat and got to do some of the good work and goal-setting and priority-setting for the county. I think it was very productive. And so it was a great time with everybody here on the dais and also you, Administrator Schmidt, and the rest of the team that was involved. So thank you for that. I'm going to give another update on the SHS Supportive Housing Services Task Force that just wrapped up. I don't know if you guys saw your email from President Peterson. If you guys had a chance to review that, it just came in. But as you know, and should the public should also know, is that there is not a viable path right now to move forward with an extension of the SHS tax. A lot of the larger issues that we were talking about and our concerns from this dais, it seems that the voters agree with our concerns, and we have a lot of work to do to build public trust back. Right now, though, those next steps are, is how do we go forward with intergovernmental agreements? And we are all having this conversation and having, or all struggling because of two large entities that are not able to competently address this issue. And so we do need to address the IGA, whether it's, there's conversations where there's no IGA, where there's a change in the structure, there's conversations that maybe we have our own, what we do already, they're just the same between Clackamas County and Washington County, or individual IGA, they're the same, but maybe still have more tailored IGAs between public entities and agreements that way. I had dinner with President Peterson this week to, to kind of discuss, like, where I was perceiving maybe our position to be. I didn't speak for the board, but I wanted to give insight to where, where we would be. I also want to make sure that, as they need to deal with Monloma County and Portland, that we can continue to go forward and do the business we're doing with competent, reasonable agreements with Metro, and if they have a different issue that they need to work out, they need to work that out, and then allow us to continue to do good work that we do. So that conversation is happening. The next step is that we're changing the oversight on how SHS funding is, is looked at. We're going to be putting up the Policy Advisory Committee, you'll hear it called PAC, is, that's going to start up in July, and so then we're going to start that planning around that. I'll be engaged in that also. And there's still some work that we need to do around streamlining and making the oversight process less complicated, in my opinion. Chair Roberts, I see you out of your head because you were in the room when all the eyes glazed over, when we were being told by Metro how that process would look. So there's some work to do. We do- We do agree at the first step, though, with forming the PAC, which will have a strong elected component to it, of elected officials to help provide that oversight, which is a change. So, that will be coming forward. I, kind of expressing my thoughts as the, as the co-chair, want to put, and what we have already stated from staff level and from this board, just for timeliness, I, I mean, I can bring it back, my letter back to board, but I wanted to respond back from my desk and just say, hey, this has been our position, this has been our recommendations from staff, this is how we like to perceive potentially the IGA, not speaking of half the board, but at least in the relationship with President Peterson, as the co-chair, give that feedback from what I saw sitting in the room and going through the process, that if I do that letter, it would go out, probably, because I know that everybody's kind of going on break, so it'd go out right after the, the second week of July. So, I don't know how you guys thought about that, if you wanted to speak as one. I don't think it's quite necessary for us to do a one voice from the board for this letter, but I'd be more than happy to share with you. But I do think we need to communicate back kind of where our position is. I think I have a grasp on that, so I didn't want to overly complicate it either. I don't know if we need that level of, of full board in that. I'd be interested to know what you guys think about it, but I do want to communicate back and make sure that I'm advocating for where our position has been, kind of in the position where I've been representing us. So, I would love your feedback on what you guys think about the SHS and where we're at with it. I think the polling made it really clear that there was no viable pathway to do a lot of the things. So, but we, but it is clear we have a lot of work to do to build voter trust. So, that's all I have, Chair, unless somebody has questions for me.
All right. I think, to kind of follow up, I mean, I'd like to see the letter, and we have some individual conversations about it, and, or if somebody wants to make a, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, let me just, just quickly, and I say that, you're right, Ben. Thank you for your work. You are representing the board, so I think it's probably a good idea, because let's just say that the chair does everything you, you want. You requested your letter, and then the board sees and says, oh, by the way, we want this too. Then it puts you in an awkward position, and we don't want to do that. So, it might be a good idea just to run it by us, in one form or another.
Are you guys able, I don't know if we're, I don't know if we're going to have another board meeting to like go, hey, this, is there a way for, way for us to quickly give a thumbs up by email or go through staff somehow?
Was it required?
We're not, it's not required, but we do have like a timeline of like where it makes sense to have a reply back from, to the President Peterson's email going in before we get in started on the PAC, and as we start the discussions around like what an IGA process may or may not look like. There is some discussion like no IGAs. I just don't think Clackamas County and Washington County would be supportive of having a no IGA at all between us and Metro. There're talk, there's rumblings about some other ways or things. I won't get into it here, but, but I just, timely, I want to make sure that we're able to be responsive to with, with how the calendar looks.
Gary, you have a, the next time you meet as a board is Tuesday, July 8th. So, look, nothing's going to happen next week anywhere, so it could wait till Tuesday, July 8th. You cannot make decisions over email, so you need to discuss it in a public setting, which would be Tuesday, July 8th.
My, a lot of people are on vacation. A lot of the staff that we need to meet with to formulate this are not going to be here the week of, is that the, is that, oh, that's the second week of July.
Second week of July.
Prob, I talked to Emily today, I could probably, because I need to meet with Shannon Veheed, I probably want to run something past Mary, so like there's just some still workings that'd be done.
Yeah.
Yeah. Chop, chop.
Just want to make sure that you totally know what's going on.
Yeah, no, thank you for the update, Ben.
I think that needs to be done, yeah, for sure.
All right. Commissioner Helm.
Yeah, so, we just had our two-day retreat. I think my feet are officially wet now here at the county. It was, as Martha mentioned, it was intense. I think we got a lot of good work done, and I'm, I'm excited that we set some priorities and goals. I'll be visiting the Children's Center tomorrow morning for their open house, as well as meeting with the Stafford Hamlet people, which I mentioned earlier tomorrow afternoon. I think I'm almost done with all my briefings with every department. There, one more today, and I think another one next week's, or the week after, and, and then those will be done. There's a lot on my calendar coming up, a lot of meetings, a lot of, with the CPOs, Hamlets, various mayors and stuff in some of the outlying cities, so there's a lot going on. I'm excited and energized and exhausted all at the same time.
Great. Thank you. And I'll just kind of follow up on a couple of comments on the strategic planning. My, thanks to all my colleagues for their honest, frank input. We had robust conversations, and more is going to roll out on it, and just want to extend my thanks to everybody on that. So, I did want to follow up on this RJ Cook, who made some comments earlier, and just about the volunteerism, and I'm going to follow up on that. And what's really amazing is, you know, the CPOs, the Hamlets, the villages, the Budget Committee, and then even more, and Gary, excuse me, I want to take a drink here. This morning, Gary and I were recognizing folks that were in volunteer connection, and I had this wonderful opportunity really to meet this lady, and, and we talked the other day about, you know, the small things that make a difference, right? And this was kind of resounding to Gary and I, and we said, this is one of those amazing things that really is very touching, and just to give you an idea that this, a volunteer connection, last year alone, they provided almost 15,000 hours of service to residents in Clackamas County, and that really touched about 3,000 people. And they, their volunteering is really the heart of every strong and vibrant community, and, and how they stay connected, they're working with seniors that are isolated, and the stories just go on and on. And so, I had the chance to meet this wonderful lady. I mean, I honestly, when I read about it, I was like, oh, my gosh, I'm totally blown away. But her name's Margie. She's been a volunteer with the Senior Companion Program for over 18 years. Her journey's been there since 2007, and this August, she'll be turning 99 years old. And I, I just loved her energy, her ability. She's actually said, "I've got eight more years of service," and she's going to outdo her father. And I said, man, this lady is inspirational and, and really was just a shining example of people giving back to the community, and there's so many people to really kind of recognize and thank, because Gary did a great job with that group. So, I did want to give a plug in to Volunteer Connections. If you're interested, you can call 503-655-8875, and get connected on a lot of really important things facing our community. And then, just kind of following up, because we're also going to be on break, as, as many you know, we'll be celebrating the Fourth of July, and there's many families and friends are going to be using the waterways, barbecues, and, and obviously, I'm always in about the safety. And just want to remind folks, it's, our wildfire season is here, it's, it is really asking all of us to be cautious. I can give you a story about fireworks in Happy Valley. We had somebody fire some fireworks over and burnt the neighbor's house down. So, it is just, I can't tell you to be cautious at this time about use of fireworks, barbecues, and just making sure you're careful around that. And then, kind of following up on our waterways, and in these hot weathers, just people are in the river, and honestly, every year, you'll hear of a tragedy. And so, I just can't encourage people enough to wear life jackets to be safe out there and have a designated driver. So, with that, I just want to wish everybody happy and safe the Fourth of July, and again, I just want to extend my thanks to the Board of County Commissioners. We have tough conversations, and we're both trying to, we're all trying to do the best for the citizens of Clackamas County, and, and we can't do it without incredible staff and Gary and his staff. I just want to say thank you, and all take care and be safe. So, with that, we'll be adjourned.